That's right, he has no chair.
Yeah. How about the audio? Yeah. You know, I hate that. I'm sorry, I do. I'm sorry, they still can't.
Just get in there.
As a result, we don't want to make a man.
Just get in there.
No, it's just like, I listen to all you say.
That's what I was.
There's nothing worth a well, a well attended travel program.
Oh, we got chair, chair issue.
You feel like a brand new person?
But that's, that's exactly what it is.
Hold on, Julie gets situated.
We're going to get started for the city council meeting. I stand for the pledge.
My pledge to the leaders is to read the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it expands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll go ahead and read a statement. In order to avoid unnecessary fines from Oregon OSHA for violating the governor's mask mandate, I'd like to note that there are signs requesting people to wear masks at the entrance of the building. Masks are available to use in the back of the room and as an honorable reminder, the mandate is outlined in OSHA Workspace Advisory Memo eight point one, three point two, one. At this time, would you like to do the statement on the online?
To everyone who is joining us this evening, for members of the public who would like to take part in tonight's meeting, we have some instructions to help in case you are new to using Microsoft Team. Notice the icon in the upper right-hand corner of your screen. The second one from the left is a chat bubble icon indicated with the yellow arrow. If you wish to be recognized by the mayor to speak, please choose the bubble icon to enter the meeting chat. It will appear on the right-hand side of your screen. In the chat, enter your name, address, and phone number, followed by the topic you wish to discuss. If you wish to speak at any point during the meeting, you can choose the hand icon, also located in the upper right-hand corner. It is the equivalent to raising your hand. The mayor, acting chairperson, or moderator will ask you to speak at the appropriate time. We'll give everyone a few minutes now to enter their name, address, phone number, and topic they'd like to address with the council in the meeting chat. We ask, in the interest of time, that people not repeat a previous speaker. Instead, state you agree with their point or disagree with their point. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes. Any extension of that time is at the sole discretion of the mayor or meeting chairperson per the council rules. Those joining by phone will be noted by the moderator for the mayor or chairperson. The fact the meeting is online does not excuse poor behavior, and the mayor does retain the right to have people removed from the meeting as stated in the council rules.
Thanks, Julie. At this time, consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Point of order. Point of order. We need to vote, or identify that we're here. Roll call.
Oh geez, I'm trying to push it back. My apologies, roll call, I thought we already did it.
Mayor Mahler.
Present.
Council Gerson.
Present.
Council Trask.
Present.
Council Gorley.
Present.
Council Coleman.
Present.
Council Sanchez.
Here.
Council Richards.
Present.
As the record show, we have all seven present with no absent. And now, at this time, consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second by roll call, please.
Council Coleman.
Aye.
Council Richards.
Aye.
Council Trask.
Aye.
Mayor Mahler.
Aye.
Council Gerson.
Aye.
Council Gorley.
Yes.
Council Sanchez.
Yes.
As the record show, we have seven ayes, none ayes approval, consent agenda. At this time, recognition of visitors and hearing the petitions, anybody like to come forth before council will be heard? Please come forth and just state name and address for record. One second here. There you go.
Sisters of the city council, my name is Christine Gilmar, and I actually reside in Moscow, Idaho. But I'm here representing Rural Development Initiatives and the Sweet Home Youth Program that has been here for about two years. For those of you who don't know who Rural Development Initiatives are, we are a nonprofit based in Coburg, Oregon. And our mission is to strengthen people, places, and economies in the Pacific Northwest. For the last two years, we have been working with the Sweet Home Youth in the junior high and through with the Boys and Girls Club. And bringing a youth program to help develop the children and the students of the, excuse me, of the junior high. The way we've been doing this is through seeing things in new ways, communicating better with each other, working more effectively, getting things accomplished, and building momentum. And then to give you a little bit more flair of how we've been doing that, I want to invite Christian Vasquez-Zep to present a little bit more.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Christian Vasquez, and I'm here representing RDI as well as Christine. So the way we train our kids, or in this case, Sweet Home Youth in the community, our program has some expectations, right? Like, and this is how we try to achieve for them to develop these leadership skills and to enhance their capacity in order to get things done in community. So we expect for them to grow together as a group, to learn new skills and use them to improve the quality of life in community. We want them to build more connections, to complete a project together, and for them to be committed to all of the above. Tonight, we have two representatives from the cohort that is running right now, and I would like to invite now AJ Rodriguez and T. Herrera. And I would like to ask them a couple of questions regarding their project and what is, what is it that they want to do in community and what they want to achieve? You can please come forward. So as part of the program, they had to complete a project that impacts community, and we gave them kind of like the freedom to select what it is that they wanted to do. And I want you guys to talk to city council a little bit more about your project.
Okay, so the main. So the main idea of our project is to teach the community about mental health, both in youth and adults. Because we do not see a lot of people standing up and actually supporting the fact that mental health is an actual issue. And a prob, this is such a problem because I know from personal experience, how many people have, I have almost lost, I have lost my age that have, because of these mental health issues, that people just ignored or pushed off. And we're wanting to do this so that way we, one, people do not feel like they, sorry, that they are a burden to others, nor, and so that way they could also, people have the ability to help others and know how to help others.
Do you, how does your group want to achieve like this raise of awareness that you want, want to?
So we are planning on bringing in a person, a lady with a PH, a PhD in mental health. To bring her in and have her set a session that's about an hour and a half to teach people of how they can help people with mental health issues, how to come out and help others, obviously. And how you can help yourself as well. We're planning on having this session sometime before the end of the month, although the date has officially been decided.
So why, why, why do you guys care? Why, why did you select this project and want to engage in this?
Because like I said before, we have seen the amount of people both our age and older that have been going through mental health issues, especially because of this pandemic. And that need help, but are rather too afraid to reach out because with adults, it'd be, oh, you're an adult, you can handle it. Or as a kid, oh, you're a kid, you don't have real mental health issues, you don't have as much stress. Even though even scientifically today, it has been proven that kids do have a lot of stress. And this is so important to us because it makes it to where a lot of kids, I know for a fact my age, who don't feel okay to come out and say, hey, I have a problem, can you help me fix it?
Yeah, can you talk a little bit about, maybe have you seen some of these issues, like you know someone that needs help and hasn't been, has been afraid of coming forward or, yeah?
I have noticed a couple of things that have happened. One of my friends has a mental disability that he's afraid to come up and talk to people about it because he's worried he's going to be judged about his mental disabilities. And I've had a friend that, my friend's friend killed himself because he was like being bullied for what he had as a mental disability. Nobody would really listen to him or anything like that. So that's, that's why I think this project would be a good idea.
So we heard about the importance of their project, what they, why, why they think it's important. And as part of the, the, as part of the, this program, we work, we're kind of like trying to build together their leadership skills in order to do some good in community. And a way that we're, we're doing that is by connecting them to council, councillor Harrison. And in order for them to join the youth advisory council. And councillor, you would be, if you could help us or talk to the kids a little bit about that opportunity. I feel that we have to talk a little bit about it, but this is the first time that they're here. As you can notice, like, they're a little bit stressed, a little bit nervous, but they're, they're doing, you, you guys are doing awesome, by the way. So if you could talk a little bit about that opportunity and we'll be, and yeah, so they can learn a little bit about it and see how they could apply those skills to, you know, for the better, betterment, I guess, of the city, like.
So I plan to address that at their graduation, so I can talk to you about that. But what we're really looking for is for one of you to sit right here and talk with us and listen to what goes on in the city. Tell us your point of view. You don't have, you wouldn't have a vote, but we want you to have a voice throughout the community, because you're right, we don't listen to you enough. And so that's kind of the goal of the youth advisory committee. We really need somebody on the city council, and we need somebody on the chamber board, and we need somebody on the planning commission. Wherever we can get you installed in an adult committee to give us your voice, that's what we're looking for.
You know, mental health is, for our younger generation, is a serious problem. And I'm very proud of both of you coming here tonight and giving your testimony.
Thank you, everybody, for leaving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything you want to ask of your, of your leadership, your town leadership?
Me and T were wondering if we can ask, because, for our trainer, we're asking if the community could know about what we are planning on doing for, for the community? So we can like train them up on the, on the mental health issues.
Consider it done.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, you're very, very brave for being here, and I would invite you to attend our community health committee. We'd have a lot of conversations about these kinds of issues, so thank you.
They have, they have a meeting coming up, the twenty. The third. Third Monday, I think it's the twenty-first, so it's six o'clock here. So if you want to come and talk to the health committee about that, about your plans, I think that'd be a really good idea. Did a really great job, by the way, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the invitation as well.
Folks, you don't need to be afraid to come and talk to us, there's only one scary guy here. I won't mention who it is, but we appreciate you coming, and we are sincere about that. And councillor Gerson is absolutely right, we'd like to have you on here at least once of our meetings. It'd be better if you're both here, but it, I mean, both meetings that we have, but we're welcome to have you, for sure.
Thank you.
I also just want to add, thank you for coming. As the youngest councillor that sits here, I want more young people here, so I hope to see you here someday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again, appreciate you coming this evening, like I said, I'm proud of you, you did a wonderful job tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Technology and I don't get along. The one thing I would like to say to thank you is for uplifting these children, for supporting the children of your community. It is one of the rarest things we see in the Pacific Northwest, and thank you to Sweet Home for lifting these kids up and empowering them to make change in their own community. So thank you from RDI to you.
Okay, any more visitors would like to come forth, be heard before council? Okay, now we'll go on to old business, RCA Radiator Supply request.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to refer this item to admin and finance.
I have to second that one. And we'll go by roll call, please, to refer this to admin finance.
Was a discussion allowed, with a first and a second, or just a vote?
I'll open it up for questions concerning it, but there was some concerns, have a discussion with, with our admin finance regarding this. Do you have any questions? Go ahead.
So I just have a question, we had a different organization come to our attention requesting monetary donations that wasn't referred to admin finance, so I don't understand the difference between them and this.
I think the, we've said at presidents that we need to address, because I think that you do for one, and all of a sudden, everybody wants to do. I think we're trying to come up with some structured process regarding it, and I think it's probably well overdue, because if we don't, everybody's going to come through that door wanting money, and we're going, how are you going to do it? So that was kind of the, the question and directive of why to go before admin, is we need to come up with some kind of a process, just not just grab every, every request that comes to the door. So that was kind of the thought. Yes, we've done it, we probably should have put more process and procedures in the past, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, Blair, do you know how, we have, we have a fund for that, don't we? But it's a limited fund, or is there, I mean, Brandon Moore able to speak to that?
So, yeah, yes, we have an economic development fund.
Now, I'm not talking about economic development fund, I'm talking about the things that we do.
For special events?
Yes.
We have a budgeted line item for special events, and typically that's for city-run events.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And the only one that we fund right now, in the past, we've done the Sweetheart Run, which didn't happen this year due to a lack of a partner, but also the Harvest Festival. And the Movies in the Park.
Well, I, and I, I do agree with the mayor in that, you know, we could have twenty of them come and ask for money, and we don't, I don't know where that's going to come from to, if it's going to come out of the economic development thing. I don't know that that appears or appeals to me for, for businesses that are doing those things, I don't know. I mean, I'm okay with whatever the council comes up with, but yeah, we could have twenty of them come, I know there's going to be two more coming that I've heard. But we need to put some sort of a amount on that, that maybe that we should consider in this particular instance, and maybe we should come up with a policy that will, will handle that. And I think that's the, the distance, I mean, the, the distance, the place we want to go to see how we can put something on that in paper, in whatever, a policy or whatever we do, so that we go crazy out, out, out on this, this situation. And I think that's why this was brought out, so.
So, Mr. Mayor, I think part of the problem is our newer councillors don't know where this money came from, and that it's a static amount of money, that there's no more money going into it. And it is for the facades and the businesses downtown, and so that's, when it's gone, it's gone. And, and we have some big projects ahead of us, and we don't have enough revenue for all of that to start with. But we also have a practice of donating money that goes towards grants and stuff, don't we, for projects that people are doing? Because I know we applied for some of that for the Christmas decorations and things that are going on. And so these people can, that, they can apply for that as well. And then our budgeting is coming up, and so if we wanted, as a body in our budget committee, to set aside some money to do this in the future, we could. But that would be happening during the budgeting process or through, correct me, the name of the group we donate the money to that comes out into community grants and stuff.
Sweet Home Community Foundation.
Thank you, and that's, that's a perfect venue for that to occur, so.
Several, several years ago, we had that community grant program that was turned over to them, and that's kind of the thought behind this, too, is you, that was a structured program with criterias and how much money. We allotted so much money per, per quarter, per, per year, and, and that was, somebody came before council, or had a proposal that had to meet, and it went before admin finance, and it had to meet certain criterias. Then it came back to the council for approval, whether it made the criterias or not, for you guys for decision. So everything still comes back to council for decision, it's just, we need to, we feel, at least I feel, or I think councillor Gerson feel, we need to have some kind of a criteria before we just donate money, because it's all over the board.
I think that helps.
Banners, you've got fifteen thousand, you got this, this, you don't have a, we could be here all night trying to figure out what we're going to do for donation to, to an organization. And even if it meets a criteria, what we're looking for as for community, so that's kind of the thought on it, so it's up to you guys on your decision regarding it, but.
So if I may, Mr. Mayor, just quickly, I know that Radiator Supply House is committed to our community, doing whatever they can to make it better for residents, bring business into town, offer events that give residents something to look forward to. And they are going to have a national barbecue competition that if we can see into the future and their vision, it's going to turn into something internationally. And I would just be concerned as a city not wanting to partner with them to help our community gain that sort of recognition, having kind of egg on our face when everybody else outside of the community wants to partner with them.
I'm not saying we don't partner with them, I'm saying we should have some kind of criteria or some, something that says what, how much we really are going to give to them. So we don't have an open pocketbook, so that's kind of my, my thought behind it, but it's, again, it's up to you council decision which direction you want to go.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to clarify, on the community, Sweet Home Community Foundation, those grants, is that just for nonprofits, or is it also for businesses in the community?
I believe it's nonprofits, but I'd have to.
So in this case, Radiator Supply would not be able to qualify for that type of grant?
Probably not.
But at the same time, I agree with councillor Sanchez in that this is a huge opportunity for the city of Sweet Home, so I, I like processes, and I sit on that committee, so I'm happy to get the process going, so.
I think we have some time for the Radiator Supply House, it's not, we have to make immediate decisions, so I would recommend, and my, my proposal would be recommended, bring it before the immediate next admin finance committee for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I think that we can, I, I think that we can get that accomplished and bring that back to you at the next meeting, because we do have some time. But I think it's important that we put some sort of a policy out there or something to say that, you know, because when we first started this thing when downtown, it was five bucks, and then it went up to ten bucks or something, and then I think it's got the option of somebody giving it up to fifteen thousand dollars for a.
Oh, the seat grant?
Yes, and, and so I think we need to put some sort of a balance part of that, so that we can, when we come back to the council, or they come to the council, we have a limit of what we can put out there. Now, it can be, you know, mayors can say, well, let's do more than that, and that's okay. But I think that we need to have some sort of a policy that tells us, well, this is what we have, and this is all you can, we can give. Because we, when we started out with the, the, the thing downtown with the facades and all that, and the block tops and all that stuff, we had quite a chunk of money, and we have not replaced that. And so we could be out of that money pretty quickly if, if we, if we continue to do what we've done in the past, and there's nothing wrong with that. We've done, we've done a pretty good job of putting that out with people wanting to help downtown and, and, you know, OnM Tire and whoever else, you know, it's, it's, it was a good thing, it still is a good thing, but I think this is a little bit. It still is a good thing, but I think this is a little bit different from that, in my opinion. I think that the thing for the jamboree, that's going to be downtown. Radiator Supply is going to be in Foster on 47th Avenue, which nobody's going to see. They probably have a bunch of signs. They're good guys, don't get me wrong, and I'm not really opposed to giving them an amount of money, but people in the city are not going to see that. They're going to be on 47th Avenue, however many, there are a thousand people or however many, and that's good for the city too. But how many people in the city of Sweet Home are going to see that? That'd be one of my concerns, but I think we can get that done by our next meeting and see what you guys think.
So, Mr. Mayor, I, this is, I want to make it clear, it's no reflection on the business. They are great partners and we really, we're really lucky and blessed to have them here, but I do support moving it to Admin Finance.
Again, I want to reiterate, I'm not against the business. I think they have a very great business and I'm not opposed to partnering with them. I just feel we need to probably have a structure. So, that was for the motion and second by roll call please.
Counselor Richards?
Now.
Counselor Sanchez?
No.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gerson?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes. Five ayes, two nays to move this to Admin Finance Committee to structure some kind of a procedure regarding the economic development funding that we're handing out. Request for council action intergovernmental agreement with Lynn County for proposed RV sewage disposal facility.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, as you and the council are aware, we have continuing negotiations and situation that we're trying to create there at 24th Avenue. The county, as you know, has proposed, has signaled that they're interested in donating some property to FAC that could be the, a facility directed at the unsheltered in our community. At the same time, Lynn County would be retaining a portion of that property and they would like to put a RV sewage disposal site at that facility. The reason why is because they currently handle all of that kind of thing at their various parks in the area and those are handled in septic systems. Those septic systems are not able to keep up with the demand and they're facing increasing regulation from DEQ on those septic systems. They're trying to find a way to get that waste into a system such as ours. And so, they have proposed building a facility where people who utilize the parks in their travel trailers or their RVs are able to drive through a facility and empty their tanks and at the same time they could fill up with water. And so, it would be kind of a tourist oriented facility. Because of the nature of the donation of the property that they're proposing, there would need to be an easement through the city's property, 24th Avenue, to serve that site. Right now, there is a driveway, but it is right next to the railroad tracks. And so, it's, it is first off, not big enough to handle the traffic that would be going through it. And second, it's too close to the railroad tracks for the proposed crossing that we would like to see there. As you no doubt are aware, we're planning on 24th Avenue continuing north across the tracks to eventually get to the city's former Knifed Requarry property. So, their access needs to change. And so, an easement through there is necessary. The county would like to have a, an agreement governing that easement, intergovernmental agreement that essentially spells out who's paying for what when it comes to the improvements constructed in that easement. We have, in previous council meetings, the council has voted in support of granting the easement, but has not had any discussions about the money side of things of who would be paying for what when it comes to that development. The proposal before you is largely crafted by Lynn County and then city staff reviewed it and made some adjustments. City attorney has taken a look at it as well. And this is the draft that we have available for you to look at now. It is, of course, open to negotiation, but again, it's, it would require the county to sign off as well. My understanding from county staff is that this, that this agreement as it is, is acceptable to the county. Essentially, what it dictates is that the county would be, would pay for the roadway portions of the improvements. Let me back up and describe what's in the easement. Easement would have power infrastructure for both the FAC site and the county site. It would have a line for telecommunications, would have a large water line that would be enough to serve the FAC site, plus a hydrant, plus a water fill station at the county site. It would also have pavement and gravel base and pavement that's suitable to handle the loads of travel trailers and RVs and such. And it would have a multi-use path that could be usable for pedestrians and bicyclists as well as drainage swales. And the main roadway would be bordered by a one-foot wide concrete ribbon, not necessarily a curb so much as a ribbon so that it keeps the road base in shape and keeps it from crumbling on the edges, but allows the drainage off of the road into the roadside swales. It also would require lighting, there'd be about five lamp posts that would be along that easement. I think that covers it. So, essentially, the county would pay for the roadway portion, that would be the road base and the asphalt and the concrete ribbon. And that would go from 24th Avenue to the eastern edge of the portion that the county retains. So, the eastern edge of the RV disposal site would go through the city's property and through the proposed FAC property. The, in the packet, you can see the agreement, but also a cost estimate. Our best guess right now on what this wall would cost is a total of $106,000 of which, no, sorry, more than that, total of $180,000 or so. The Lynn County portion would be $106,503 and then the city portion would be $77,216. And that would be paid for either by, in some combination of the city and FAC. So, I, that is the proposed agreement and I'm available for any questions you might have.
How much revenue do we get from the disposal site?
That's not determined at this time. It would be, you know, it's going to be a wastewater user and so, there would have to be some negotiated rate with the county, whether it's one of our, whether it follows our existing rate or it's a specialized rate, especially for this type of facility. We don't have a facility like this now. Greg, correct me if I'm wrong.
We do not have a public site. There are some trailer parks and some RV, private RV that work on RVs that have dump stations and things like that, but we do not have a public one within the city limits that I know of.
Because I know right now with the county, of all their parks, they collect all the revenue, 100%. So, my question is, how is that going to be split out? That would be my one question, so.
The MOU doesn't cover the operation of the site itself. It only covers the easement. And so, that would remain for future negotiations of how that could be handled.
Again, I think that would be a question I would, I kind of would like to know the answer for because if they're putting 106,000 out and we're supposed to put 77,000 out and they collect 100% of the funds, they're going to recoup their cost and guess what? We're out $77,000.
Nothing in my conversations with them has indicated that they expect to be able to dump sewage in our system at no cost. I'm quite, that has never been an ask in meetings that I've been involved in. So, there has to be some sort of contribution. And obviously, people going through there are paying a fee. There needs to be a portion of that that goes to the city.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Will they also be on city water for the fill station?
Right. The fill station would be on city water. That actually would also be usable by city customers. So, you know, outfits like No Drought that are, their bulk water fill up would be able to go through that system, be able to use an automated, much like you're filling your gas tank, an automated system to fill up their water tanks.
Just, you know, in early conversations with this project, the city was looking at putting in some sort of a water station for people. And so, that's kind of why it got incorporated into. They were willing to think and go after the grants and put the infrastructure in and we were going to provide stuff, but the water to that would be metered from the city. So, they would be paying for that. And we would have to construct some sort of a waste because we don't want to receive industrial type waste or any type of septic or other things, but we could base some sort of residential off these and it's normal wherever they do it, so.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. So, when we're doing this, Blair, we're talking about the actual facility itself. I'm concerned about who's going to be patrolling it? Who's going to make sure that people don't camp overnight there? Is that going to become a city responsibility?
When it comes to the RV site?
Mm-hmm.
So, it would be, it's still county property, it would remain county property. The city would not have any responsibilities of any operations on that site. So, any, any safety concerns would be the same way we respond to any private property that is within the city. As for any camping on site, the way, all the designs that I've seen, there would only be travel lanes involved. There's not really a place to park and stay. It's very similar to a fueling station in that you have lanes up to the machines and that's, and that's it. There's no other parking. So, I haven't heard the county say anything about their operations beyond just the operations of taking the waste and filling the water, but I expect they would consider it the same as, you know, any of their current dumps facilities where you can't just camp in the dump lane.
So, in looking at the map, it's just going to be roadways on a dirt path? Is that a dirt lot? Is that what you're saying? It's not going to be all blacktopped or anything like that?
No. Well, again, this agreement is not about the development of that site, but they are, they are proposing that it will all be paved. I mean, they're not, they're not putting a gravel lot in there. Everything they've indicated is that these would be paved lanes and adequately, you know, the islands would be concrete to hold the equipment, et cetera.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may? So, you were saying that this was drafted by the county and who looked over this to see if we were checking out our legal rights and?
So, the county, obviously, the county attorney has been involved and the county drafted it. Robert Snyder, our city attorney, has also looked over it.
So, for me and for the record, I just, I have concerns when other people's attorneys and Robert looking over this, I just would like outside attorneys to look over contracts that are holding us liable for certain things to make sure that we have all the protection that we can as a city before we get into agreements. And so, that would be my concern with this as well as improving other people's real property without getting anything in return for it.
Mr. Mayor, I, a long time ago, when they were going to put the, this water wastewater thing put there right by Public Works, it was going to be a ridiculous amount of money at the time and we voted not to do that. I'm just concerned about what in the world are people going to drive down 24th Avenue, off the main road, back on that blacktop to drain their water or drain their sewer and or get water? If you're coming from Carvallos, you're coming from Albany, you're coming from Lebanon, you're not stopping there to get water. It's just that simple. It makes absolutely no sense to me, none. And we're going to spend whatever, $100,000 or $77,000 to put into that above and beyond the FAC stuff? That just makes, it defies my, I just don't get it. I mean, how are they even going to know it's there? They'll probably put a sign up, but nobody's going to do that. I just don't get it.
So, right now, people do this out at Sunnyside Park all the time and it's maxed out. And we've had conversations about needing a site to be able to give people water. It's in Sweet Home. If it doesn't happen here, it's going to happen in Lebanon. So, it is in the best interest of all of our people who have RVs and like to do recreation to have this here. I guess my big concern is, as long as I've been on this council, I've heard about bureaucracy. I've heard about slowing things down and not getting things done and it's got to be done now, it's got to be done now. But every time we have something before us, that's exactly what we are. And this benefits Sweet Home. They're cost sharing, they're bringing in something that would help elevate our community. And so, I'm just really concerned about why are we wasting our time even asking questions and getting more information if we never move anything forward?
I guess a clarification of the questions, especially what Counselor Trask was bringing up. Again, there's still unanswered questions here. I camp myself. I guess talking to the county commissioners was the dumps, because they have to close down the dump sites, okay, for sewage. That was one of the problems out at all the parks, okay? So, I understand having a dump site. Well, what Counselor Trask was talking about was the water fills part of it. Me personally, I fill up my RV before I go. Now, is the question back to the county commissioners would be, are you shutting down your water, all your water accessible, accessible water at the campground? Is that something, the question I have or an answer to that question?
But No Drought, No Drought uses our water too. And we were having this conversation before this even developed and they're wanting an easement through. And so, I'm just concerned that, again, here we are, they're wanting to pay half a barrel of this development. And so, I just, no, I don't, I don't get it. I have no idea why.
I'm not, I'm not necessarily against this, Counselor Gorley, but I guess one of the questions would be that I know, I can name three cities that have services like No Drought, and I'm all for No Drought, but when you go into some of their cities, they have these huge meters. And I know they're not cheap, but they're not really that expensive either. And they go up to these meters and then these meters are controlled by the city and they fill up their tenders with that. And it's not having some big facility for filling. So, I guess my question from the county commissioners is, is the campground's going to totally turn off water filling? Because if that is the case, then you fill up before you go camping.
Some people do, but not everybody. And so, it's just, and it's not everybody's going to do that for that reason. We have people in town whose wells go dry every year and it's getting hotter and we're having problems. And this is a water source for them to be able to do that. And so, it's, I just, I don't understand. Everybody keeps putting in a lot of time and energy and man hours, staff hours, and then when it comes before us, this is what happens. I just.
I guess, I guess my main question, there's just so many, it's not necessarily just, you quickly just rubber stamp an RCA that comes for council. I guess there's still a lot of questions need to be answered and that's where I'm coming from. And we can do it all night long, beat this thing. We just don't have, the county commissioners have not given us all the answers to some of the questions. So, I'm kind of open to maybe doing a work session to get these questions answered and then move forward with it. I'm not necessarily against it. I think it's a good thing for the community.
They said they would pay for half. They said, we've talked about having a meter on the water itself. I think those are things that can be hammered out and we can make an action. We can go ahead and vote to move this forward and go ahead and hammer those things out and give the mayor the ability to finish tying this up.
Mr. Mayor, if I may? I don't think it's bureaucracy trying to make sure that we have an outside attorney making sure we're signing an agreement to the best interest of the city prior to signing an agreement. I just think that's good governance. We are here to protect the city, protect the community, protect the shareholders' assets that they give to us to monitor. And so, having an outside attorney look at agreements prior to signing them, we should have done that months ago. So, the fact that we haven't done it now is actually what's concerning.
I agree.
We have an attorney on staff, we have an economic development expert on staff, we have a city interim manager on staff, how many ayes? And, you know, every time we take something out of the And, you know, every time we take something out of the city, it costs us money. It, it costs a lot of money. And so I think we need to be prudent, frugal, in the right way and, um, and move some things along.
Any other council questions or feedback? Okay, I'll go ahead and come up, name and address. What's that? Okay, so I'll go ahead and grant the testimony. Name and address for record, just for the record.
Good evening. My name is Brock Byers. I'm Family Assistance and Resource Center Group. Three thousand.
South Sunnyam Highway. Charlie Gert, I'm the Executive Director of Family Assistance and Resource Center Group.
I'd like to make a statement on behalf of our board to the Sweet Home City Council. Family Assistance and Resource Center Group is announcing to the council that we are prepared to move forward with the agreed homeless project plans. We, as a board, have also decided that we are prepared to withdraw from the project agreement with Sweet Home if the IGA is not signed or we are prohibited in some way from moving forward at this time. It is disappointing that politics postponed a project that could have saved an extremely valuable and vulnerable life. It is disappointing that so many people have put so much time, resources, money, and there's been no benefit for the city, for FAC, and definitely not the people we serve. Sadness is with the lack of humility, humanity. The city has shown towards one of its most marginalized and vulnerable groups. It is sad that the people in charge of making sure that all of the city's residents are served would treat their unhoused people as less important than other constituents. The human beings at the camp are not those people or them, they are us. They are vibrant, they are a vibrant display of how the city of Sweet Home cares for its people, all of its people. If the agreement to move forward with the project is unnecessarily delayed, any further, the city will lose FAC's participation, all of the money that came from the diligent grant work that was done and the donations promised to the, to the project by FAC donors. The city could also be found noncompliant with the Supreme Court, Court Law, Martin versus Boise, which leaves the city open to lawsuit. It will be a loss of face to the city. Many local partners, organizations are closely watching Sweet Home at this moment because of its progressive actions to start this project. It is still our hope that the city of Sweet Home will move forward with this project. It is still our vision to see the unsheltered receive shelter. If we are unable to fulfill this vision at this time, it is our wish that once the politics have been decided, the city of Sweet Home will reach out to partner with FAC in the future.
A question for you. How's this, how's FAC having, I mean, how's this for the water fill station, dump station for RV?
This is access to our property, right? The easement, the access.
Yeah, but while still, I still may be correct or wrong. We can still do the access to, correct me wrong, Blair, we can still do access to the FAC property. I guess our biggest question back is the fill station and the RV dump station.
These, these two developments are, don't need to be intertwined, but they are. Uh, it's, the county has not come out and said it directly to me, but it's clear that they are not going to proceed with donating the property to FAC until the easement is figured out. And they're, they're asking not just for the easement, but they're asking for a, an IGA on, on who pays for what within the easement. Now, we, we could just get this over with, with just the easement itself, at which we've already signed and, and we're fine with access through. That, uh, doesn't seem to be enough apparently. And they would like some assurance that they can get their RV station, uh, built. Now, if this doesn't go through, my, my thought is that this, it will at least delay the donation of the property to FAC, uh, if not, stop it.
This is news to me. And I'm all for FAC. I'm all for the homeless site. I'm all for the easement and getting your access back there. I have questions about this fill station and I have questions about RV dump station. And that's where my position stands. I'm all for you guys having what you're going to do. So we're in a kind of a catch 22 situation here.
So originally, this was going to be a driveway and not a regular road. And that money had to come out of parks. Now that it's a road and it's substantial and it's going to be, it comes out of the Roads Department, which, well, that's my understanding, that's what I was told. And that, so it comes out of a different county pot. So they have more money to utilize for this project and they're willing to pay for half of it. And that's my understanding. And from the looks of this, they're paying over half of it. And the rest of it, we were in partnership with you to cover and to move that forward because we need to get water at that site as well. And so it just seems like if we're going to move forward and get people off the street in the core of our town and clean that up and help our police officers, help our neighbors, our constituents, our community, we need to move forward. And so we can move this forward and finish up the conversations and empower those who are necessary to make this happen to do that, right? We don't have to just sit on it and keep pushing it down the road and kicking that can. You know, we got to stop and make some decisions. That's what we're here for.
Mr. Mayor, I, I, uh, once again, we have been misled, in my opinion, about the both, both of those things. And I have no issue if the county wants to put that plant down there, no issue with that. I just don't think that we should be paying for that. And I think that, I think that, I'm for you guys too. We voted for this a long time ago. Now you see, now who's holding this up? The county. It's not us, for you folks, not at all. We voted for this a long time ago and here we are, being held hostage again, in my opinion. And I, I, I guess I'm going to say yes, we'll probably do this. And, and I'm, I'm really on the fence here because I, I think that, never mind, I've said enough.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with Lynn County as presented.
Second.
Motion second, by roll call, please.
Counselor Richards.
No.
Mayor Mahler.
Reluctantly, yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
No.
Counselor Gourley.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
No.
Can you give me clarification on the, the vote tally, please?
There are four in favor and there are three opposed.
That's what I thought I had. Okay, show the record of four ayes, three nays, moving forward with the county. Next up, RCA agreement with FAC Managed Outreach and Community Resource Facility. Before I start, I think you, is that the statement you were read already? Okay, we'll move on. So RCA regarding.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Hope you're not tired of hearing from me. But I understand if you are. These are difficult topics. This request is a memorandum of, of understanding with Family Assistance and Resource Center Group for a Managed Outreach and Community Resource Facility that is directed at the homeless population in our, in our community. This has been in the works for some time, as you're aware. And the document you have before you was initially drafted by FAC and then reviewed by myself and adjusted and then reviewed by city attorney, Robert Snyder, as well. And, um, and FAC's board has looked at the, um, at the modified version. And with some minor details has largely been accepting of it. So, um, essentially, it, it is similar to previous agreements, only there's no lease involved, uh, like we had before. And it's more, it's a, an agreement that indicates that further agreements will be made when it comes to the, the scope of work and, and various things that will be on site. So it's not committing the city to an expenditure of funds beyond the donation of the city hall, old city hall annex building, as has been discussed, and beyond some contribution to infrastructure. It still leaves a lot of that up to, uh, to negotiation and determination. It does have some protection for the city in that it does commit FAC to be in this agreement for a period of 10 years. And if they pull out during that time, there would be a sliding scale of whatever the city has put into the site would be owed back to the city, decreased over time to account for depreciation. So, um, a lot of this, we've had a lot of discussions and so, no doubt you are familiar with much, much of this, but, uh, want to make sure that you can ask all the questions that you have. And I think those are probably the best way to proceed at this point, whatever questions you have about this agreement.
Questions of council?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Regarding the eighty-eight thousand dollars in security. How does that security work with the police department and integrate with that?
So this would not be, that would not be police service. That would be a private security for nighttime. And it would be the same relationship that any private security would have with the police department. They would be essentially able to call police when they need to. Jeff, if you want to have anything to add to that?
Well, that's exactly from my understanding on the discussions. It was a, a private entity coming in to provide that service, not associated with the police department or, or actually not a city employee. And so it would be, just as Blair said, if there's an issue down there, that entity would contact us and we would respond to assist and however we can.
And, and my apologies, uh, thank you for bringing up the nighttime security. That's the other commitment that the city would be making is, is that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. So, um, this is a contract that's much more detailed than the one that we just laid eyes on. Has an outside attorney looked at this on our behalf?
We, we have a city attorney who has reviewed it. There, I don't have the ability to have an outside attorney because I don't have a budget for outside attorney work for, for this type of thing.
So with contracts going forward, I would love to put something in the budget that an outside attorney can look at these for us because I'm concerned that we're going to invest into somebody else's real property and give them assets. And then we're going to appreciate their balance sheet instead of depreciate their balance sheet. And we're going to, if they want to, um, terminate the agreement, the actual cost of improvements will then be on a reduction of a 10% per year. So, um, I have great concern with that.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So Brock, I have a question about the, um, reporting on, I, when you're talking about the number of clients served, et cetera, et cetera, that you're going to. To me, this facility is not a balance sheet. So I don't really care how many people come in and how many people go out. What I really want to know is what happened because they were there. And, um, so you list the services offered, but you don't, you're not reporting to us what's happened. So from my point of view, the numbers don't tell me what's really going on there. I mean, I guess it's important for numbers, but, but we're dealing with people here. So I'd like a little bit more human touch to the reporting to us on a quarterly basis. Thank you.
For a lot of our grants and requirements, we are doing additional reporting and, well, seven persons decide on additional metrics that this council would, would need or require.
Any other questions of the council? Gay council directive.
I move, we approve the agreement with FAC as presented.
We have five, which one do you want? Is that what we're looking at?
Yeah.
We're looking at.
Yeah.
It was as presented, so that would be option three?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Not yet.
I'll second it.
I have a motion second, roll call, please.
Counselor Gourley.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
No.
Counselor Richards.
No.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
But the record show have five ayes, two nays, moving forward with the FAC agreement with option three. Next up, resolution number seven for 2022, terminate the state of emergency due to COVID-19.
Thanks, guys.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counselors. It's with great pleasure that I bring to you resolution number seven for 2022 for your consideration. As you know, we enacted and declared a state of emergency back in 2020 with the onset of COVID-19 and the SARS-CoV-2 virus. And the governor will be lifting the emergency declaration for the state of Oregon effective April 1st. And because we have surpassed that time period where we would have to make special purchases and those types of things associated with an emergency situation, we're asking for your approval to terminate the state of emergency regarding COVID-19. Also, um, the mandate for masks is lifted effective, um, beginning March 12th. And staff is looking forward to that. And we'll just be implementing an option, an optional only mask requirement at the city facilities moving forward. So if a patron or an employee chooses to wear a mask, they'll still have that option. But it would no longer be a requirement.
Any questions at council?
Is it appropriate to clap?
We need a motion to approve the resolution?
Yes, we need a.
I still move.
Second.
Second.
Third. Sixth.
Seventh. And we have a motion second, by roll call, please.
I honestly missed the second.
You shouldn't have a sixth.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Hallelujah.
Counselor Gourley.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes, thank God.
Mayor Mahler.
Amen. Let the record show. Let the record show, we have seven ayes, no nays. Approval of resolution number seven of 2022, terminate the state of emergency due to COVID-19. Next up, new business RCA authorization to fill vacant position.
Yes, we currently have one vacant position for a temporary position, seasonal employee in our public works department. During the time that you have a pro temp city manager, there's no authority by me to be able to hire new employees. And so we're asking for your approval to move forward with the seasonal employee and authorizing me to move forward with that hiring process.
Questions at council?
So moved. Second.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Aye.
Mayor Mahler?
Aye.
Counselor Gerson?
Aye.
Counselor Trask?
Aye.
Counselor Gorley?
Aye.
And Counselor Coleman?
Aye.
Let the record show, we have seven ayes, no nays, approval of authorization to fill a vacant position. Next up RCA Chamber of Commerce contract.
Yes, our existing contract with the Chamber of Commerce has expired and city staff has been working with the chamber to update our agreement with them. The changes to the contract do set out a new schedule for the Chamber of Commerce hours and days of operation. And the new schedule would be that they would be open between Tuesday and Friday from nine to four. And then during the peak summer months, from Memorial Day to Labor Day, they would be open on Saturdays from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The new agreement also spells out when reports are due to the city in the months of April, August, and December. And then we have a 30-day window of time in which we would pay out one of the three installments to the chamber. And as part of this agreement, there are three $5,000 annual installments paid for the services that they provide to the city as our, operating our visitor center. So we are looking for approval from you tonight to approve the contract with the chamber.
So, Mr. Mayor, one of the situations they run into is what a lot of organizations have run into, and that is a lack of volunteers. And so that's one of the reasons for the change of the hours.
Makes sense. Any other questions at council?
What months are these payments made? Are they the month after the report or?
Yes, within 30 days.
30 days. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I talked to Counselor Gerson a little bit about this. You know, they're supposed to come and give us reports like three times a year, I think. I can't, I can't find it right handy, but I, I would really recommend that they come and present that to us instead of the way it was done. COVID was a mess, that, that's, that's a big deal, but I would, I would really prefer for one of them to come and talk to us about what they've done, how they're, how they're doing and all those things. So I'm okay with this.
I'll be glad to take that back to the chamber.
Any other questions? Council directive.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Counselor Gerson?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes. Let the record show, we have seven ayes, no nays, approval of Chamber of Commerce contract. Next up RCA city manager recruitment strategy.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It's one of the primary tasks that have been assigned to me as your pro temp city manager is the recruitment of your next city manager for the city of Sweet Home. And part of that hiring process is making a determination on how you want to proceed in the recruitment efforts. So we've outlined three particular options for you in the staff report. The first being that our city staff would perform the recruitment efforts all in-house. Some of the challenges with that is that there's a potential that you would have in-house applicants. And so that's not one of the recommendations that we have for you this evening, although it is an option for you. The second option would be that we would consider utilizing the services of the Oregon Cascade West Council of Governments. We are a member of that organization and we pay dues to them annually. And part of the services that the Cascade West Council of Governments offers is assistance with recruitments. They did the recruitment for the city of Harrisburg as one of their most recent recruitment efforts. And the last time I was here serving as your pro temp, they also assisted us with recruitment efforts. What, what's great about that process is that the council can determine the level of effort that they want the Council of Governments to participate in the recruitment strategy. So for example, you know, staff can do some of the work in-house and helping get the position profile ready and getting that advertised. But then the Cascade West Council of Governments could receive the resumes and applications, rank and score them, and have a discussion with the council on the recommended candidates. They could assist with interview questions based on what you're looking for in a candidate and then help also facilitate the interview process if that's what you wish. So if that is the option that you would choose, what we would do, we would ask Cascade West Council of Governments to come back and visit with you, get your input and feedback, and they would outline the process for you. And then we would have an idea about the overall budget, you could cap that. We could have them put together some proposals for us for your consideration. The third option is for you to actually retain an executive recruiting firm to do much of that same work that we would outline, that was outlined with Cascade West Council of Governments. So there are many recruitment firms that specialize in the recruitment of CAOs for cities. And it's a very rigorous process, very detailed. That also comes at a cost. Those services range between $20,000 and $30,000 plus the costs associated with the recruitment efforts such as advertising, background checks, those kinds of things, travel for candidates, travel for consultants to meet with you and review the process. So tonight, we are asking for your direction on how you would like us to proceed so that we can begin the lengthy process of recruiting your next manager. Regardless of the strategy that we choose, we're looking at at least four months for that process. It could be longer depending on the elements that you choose, and those would all be reviewed with you, assuming that you don't select us doing the recruitment ourselves. But going with these outside organizations, all of that would be reviewed by the representatives from those organizations. So the recommendation from the staff is actually that you move forward with option two, making a motion to utilize the services of Oregon Cascade West Council of Governments for the assistance with recruitment of the next city manager.
I agree with that. I mean, last time we went through this process is who we went through. I think there'd be a couple different processes we changed up a little bit from that, but I think I'm comfortable with COG. And that'd be my input on it.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, option two is good for me.
That's okay. I have one question regarding Cascade West Council of Governments. Do they, do, I noticed the executive search teams survey the staff. Could Cascade West Council of Governments also do that for us? Could that be something we request them to do?
Absolutely.
I think it would be really helpful to have staff input on their next hire, but I'm, I'm good with option two.
Well, that was, that's one thing about COG is they're pretty much open to whatever process you, you want. So, I mean, it's not set in stone as far as what they do. That's why they'll come and interview you. For me personally, and my conversations with Kristi regarding this was one of the processes that I wasn't already thrilled about last time was going through the Skype. That process, I didn't think that's very successful. We had a lot of problems with that. I think I changed that up a little bit. But other than that, I think, again, it's up to us to how we want to, we tell them how the process we want to move forward, so.
And I don't, I don't mean in any way to diminish the qualifications and skills of the staff. It is equally competent to what a professional recruitment firm would do. However, a professional recruiter, and this is something you could ask the COG staff to do, they may be trying to encourage managers from other communities to apply in Sweet Home. From my personal experience, most managers in Oregon are going to look to the League of Oregon Cities website to see what positions are available. If you're looking at more of a nationwide recruitment, we also have the ability to post on the International City County Management Site. And managers, you know, that have dedicated their lives to the profession of public service are going to be members of ICMA as well and would consider Sweet Home in their research.
But, Mr. Mayor, the, the last one, it was a disaster. I mean, it was, it was really a disaster. It was not, not fun at all. And when you can't see somebody face to face, it really bothers me and that it, you know, anyway, but, but I'm okay with this thing. I think this is, this worked for us last time, and I think this would be the way to go.
Any other feedback or questions at council?
Mr. Mayor, if I may? I'm not totally a fan of going directly to somebody. I prefer a bid process. I would love to select some sort of recruitment firm because I feel as though we're looking for a needle in a haystack. And so I would be of the opinion to pay a little bit more money to hopefully get a better return on our investment. As we know that the city manager needs to be a visionary for our town, and I just think that we need to maybe not use a coupon and take the next step up to try to find somebody that really works for our community.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we utilize the Oregon Cascade West, Cascades West Council of Governments for assistance in recruitment for the city manager and the utilization of ICMA.
Second.
I have a motion second by roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Counselor Gerson?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
No.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Let the record show, we have six ayes with one nay moving forward with COG to for our next recruitment strategy, authorizing Kristi to proceed forward with it. Next up RCA revisions to city manager pro temp contract.
Yes, it was brought to my attention that there's a provision in the contract that would limit me from being able to take the city vehicle home for on-call use. And so the proposed language changes would allow that change in use of the vehicle. And the recommendation is option one for your consideration this evening.
Any questions at council? Take council directive.
So moved as recommended.
Second.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Counselor Richards?
Aye.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Counselor Gerson?
Aye.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Let the record show, we have seven ayes, no nays, approval of the revisions to the city manager pro temp contract. Moving forth, we don't have anything for first, second readings. We have third reading, ordinance bill number two for 2022, by title only.
Ordinance number two for 2022, ordinance number one three zero two. An ordinance granting a franchise by the city of Sweet Home to Century Tel of Oregon DBA Century Link, its successors, and assigns the right to furnish, sell, and distribute telecommunications services to the city and to all persons, businesses, and industries within the city, and the right to acquire, construct, install, locate, maintain, operate, and extend into, within, and through said city all facilities reasonably necessary to furnish, sell, and distribute a telephone plant, transmission line, or lines, and to transmit communications in and to the city of Sweet Home to all persons, businesses, and industries within the city, and the right to make reasonable use of all streets and other public places as may be necessary, and fixing the terms and conditions thereof.
Any questions at council? Take council directive.
So I move to approve.
Second.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Counselor Gerson?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Counselor Coleman?
Yep.
Record show, seven ayes, no nays, approval of ordinance bill number two for 2022. Or, ordinance number thirteen oh two, Century Link Franchise Agreement. Reports of committees, any reports from committees?
Mr. Mayor, I will report what Counselor Trask brought up to the chamber on their meeting on the third Thursday. And also the YAC will meet next on the third, the second, the third Wednesday.
Mr. Mayor, the library committee meets this Thursday as well.
Committee meet, okay. Moving on to reports of city officials, mayor's report. On Saturday, I was honored to be able to attend a retirement party for Mr. Counselor Trask. Fifty years on the fire department. That's quite an accomplishment. Well, humorous, on a humorous note, though, oh yeah, no, I'm, no, I'm not. I didn't realize, I didn't realize that there was that many old relics within our fire department still serving. And he, just for a note, he actually got a signed letter from a president. Was it Abraham Lincoln or was it?
It was that, never mind. You know who it is.
I'm just, I'm just kidding. Thank you, Dave, for all your service and commitment to our community.
I heard they had to special order your award because there aren't many of those around.
No, there is not. No, congratulations, Dave. Very well earned. City manager report.
Yes, I think tomorrow marks two weeks with the city. It's just been an honor to get to know all of you again and to meet the new counselors. You are very blessed with a dedicated staff that is very hardworking. It's a pleasure to work with all of these department directors and other staff members who are taking our community forward and making sure that the day-to-day work is accomplished for the city. They're all doing an amazing job, and I just commend them for their service. I just have a couple of quick few things for you tonight to let you know that we'll be presenting the budget message to the budget committee and council on April 4th. And then we'll be establishing our budget schedule after that with the full committee. And to let you know that there is an invitation in your packet to the annual chamber dinner. We do plan to have a table for the city, and so if they're, if you're interested in attending that event, if you'll please let Julie know so that we can make sure we have a place for you. And really look forward to that event for our community, and that's really all I have tonight.
Yes, for the record, the date and time of that?
It is Saturday, April 2nd at 5:00 p.m.
And Blair has an update as well.
So Counselor Sanchez had requested some information on pedestrian safety efforts, in particular related to some conversations that were held with Senator Gerard last summer, I believe, or late summer, early fall. So this is kind of what I found, just to bring you up to speed on what's being done. Last fall, at some point, or early summer, city met with Senator Gerard and brought his attention to our concerns about crosswalk safety. The senator's recommendation was to compile a list of crosswalks that are of concern and rank them by need. At that time, the city manager decided to approach ODOT to, about a traffic study and include it in our upcoming transportation system plan update. The TSP update is grant funded by ODOT, and it was delayed significantly and is only now just getting started. It will include some safety data, but it is a long-term 18-month project. So at some point, the Infrastructure and Jobs Act passed by the federal government last fall was brought into this discussion, and advocates, advocates expressed a desire to make sure that the city pursued potential funding through that act as much as possible. I've attempted to, to get more of this going and learn a bit more about it. The Infrastructure and Jobs Act funding is still being worked out by the state, but there will be some funding available to us via competitive grants. ODOT gave a presentation to the Cascade West Area Committee on Transportation on February 24th on this, and I have a copy of that presentation if any of you would like to see it. And I will keep tabs on the funding requirements that they're going to have and the deadlines. The TSP process will also help, and I'm also gathering The TSP process will also help, and I'm also gathering safety data from our own police department and from ODOT so that we, our grant applications can be competitive. According to our police department, since twenty seventeen, there have been twenty-nine motor vehicle collisions with pedestrians and bicyclists that caused injuries and one which was fatal. The most common locations for these were Main and Twenty-second, where there were three incidents, Main and Thirteenth, where there were four, and the mid-block crossing that's in the sixteen hundred block of Main, which is the one by Safeway, where there were two incidents. One of these areas, Main and Twenty-second, we're already moving forward with a cross, with a improved crosswalk there as part of the ODOT sidewalk ramp project. And then the, the ODOT sidewalk project that goes from fifty, I always forget the name, fifty-six, I think, or Fifty-third to Sixtieth. That will include a couple of crosswalks at the eastern end of town as well, so. The only, from what I've been able to find so far, and research on this is ongoing, the only crosswalks that are of major concern that are not already covered by the, by projects is the mid-block crossing by Safeway and Main and Thirteenth. Now, some of these are, that's in more of an urban area. And I think that as part of our efforts to improve our streetscape, we can also work out some, some improvements into those areas as well.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, have you given those two crosswalks to Senator Gerard? Because I think he was interested in allocating, if possible, funding as well. And then the crosswalks that you were saying towards Fifty-third and Sixtieth, are they going to be lighted, or are they just going to be crosswalks?
They're going to be lighted with a mid-block, or a mid, mid-street pedestrian refuge, concrete refuge, and there will be flashing beacons. And the one at Twenty-second will be similar.
That's fantastic.
As for getting this in, I have not sent this yet to Senator Gerard, but I will.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, wasn't there a plan at some point to do one in front of Spoleto's?
That's, that's part of the, that's part of the other, the ODOT sidewalk project.
Okay. But that's, that's just passed beyond Forty-seventh.
True.
Okay.
They, they, yeah, they have two crossings that are part of that project that are not within the same area as the sidewalk.
Thank you. It's really good information. It's good ask.
Thank you. Department Directors' reports. Any questions of the Directors or vice versa?
Mr. Mayor, I have question for there. So on, on the listing of the public the cat, the things that have been done, we have a couple of commercial structures and a, and a commercial site development.
Oh, you're talking about the building permit?
Yeah.
Permits?
Yeah. Could, could you explain that a little bit, what's going on?
So I can, I can look those up for you, which, I don't know which particular developments those were. I can make some guesses. A site develop, commercials, anytime there's a, a structure put up that's, that is not a residential facility is going to require one of those commercial structural permits. And often those, those can be something as minor as a shed on a commercial property or something as major as a apartment complex. So I'd have to, I'd have to look in specifically into that. I will say that we, we did, one of those could be the, we received the, the permit application for the memory care facility at Wiley Creek.
Oh, yeah.
And so that, that's been received, but it hasn't been granted yet, so I'm, I'm not sure if that's the one that's.
We don't often see that on that report. That's.
No, no, we don't. And we're, and we're going to be seeing more. There's, there's quite a bit of activity going on.
And I just have one more question.
Go ahead.
Greg. So where are we on the Willow Street project? Because I noticed there was another fire there. This last whatever.
It's actually two and two.
So the, the LID you're referring to, we, Brandon and I are, are getting paperwork together for the financing. We have a, a plan with we went through what's called a one-stop process with all the, the federal and state agencies that have funding programs and determine kind of the best, the best bang for our buck, so to speak, when it comes to interest rates. And we're in the midst of getting those applied for. I will say that those interest rates are very attractive, even, even given the changes that we've seen. They are slower to react to the market because they're, they're government programs for, for government agencies. And so we are hopeful that that will proceed and have a very attractive interest rate for those residents.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, I could, Blair, so sometimes the government moving slow is a good thing?
Yeah, actually, in this case, yes.
Actually, I have a second question for you. I was unable to get on the call last week with the facilities going in Wiley Creek.
I was unable to as well, but.
Estimated groundbreaking, I forgot the date on that.
So the Samaritan facility?
Yes.
I've only heard that they would like to this summer, but they have not, we have not seen any building permit application from them yet.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I have a comment. We have two police officers here today. One of them says chief, and the other one's a captain, Oggy, Oggy, and, and they've, they've been filling in for us a lot. And we need to let them know that we appreciate it, at least I do, and I see, I see the chief running up down the street sometimes and, and that, that's a big plus for us, and you guys need the kudos for that.
Should we buzz, budget them some bicycles?
They have those electric ones, or the little gas powered, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, one more thing. So one of, goal five of us, for us is to improve our image. So the girls swim team took state and the wrestling team did a really, I think they were in second at state. Would it be possible to invite them to the city council for us to give them a hand? I think that it would be nice to have the students acknowledged by us.
I'm all for that.
Cheer too?
Cheer, yeah, I just say that they, they, they won their whatever division that was.
Yes, yes, whatever wins.
Yeah, and the girls basketball team went to the playoffs, which haven't happened since nineteen forty. Or they didn't have it in those days, but anyway. So Christie, can we have the entire high school show up?
So, could we have the mayor send him a letter of congratulations for each team?
We can have that. I'm all for them coming to council. I was kidding, but I mean, either come to council or I can draft a letter. That'd be fine.
My sister's on the basketball team, so we have to invite them.
No, kudos to all. We've, we've had a good year with our, our, our student athletes in, in, in Sweet Home High School, so. Either way, I'm all for either way, so. Any other questions of Department Directors?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, not a, not a question, but back to the police department, I just wanted to say in regards to what Counselor Trask said, I know that a friend of mine had interactions with your team multiple times a week or two ago, and she had nothing but praises to say you were respectful, kind, courteous, helpful. She just was so appreciative of how kind you were to her. So thank you for what you guys are doing for our community.
Well, thank you. We'll pass that on to, to all the officers. Yes.
Okay, any questions of our department or anything the Department Directors would like to bring up? Council business good of order?
I do have something good of the order. I just, I'm a bit concerned about the tone of shame that was brought to the city council, and I just want to say that I know all of us do our best to care for the city of Sweet Home, and I think that when each of us has a concern, it's okay to be concerned and to be cautious about things. And just for the record, I voted yes for the Lynn County thing because I see that the relationship between the county and the city of Sweet Home needs a little bit of a boost, a good boost. I too have some concerns, but I just want to continue to move forward, but with caution, but also to try and build bridges, so that's all.
I agree with Counselor Coleman. My concern is the communicate, the lack of communication between our county commissioners and us. And it's a concern, and I've had a conversation with Christie regarding this. We do need to repair our position with the county commissioners, but on the same token, it's a two-way street. And I, I'm, tonight was, I was caught off guard about a few things, and it was almost kind of like we were bullied to the decision, and that's not a proper thing for our community. So that's why my reluctance, because it just shows the, the breakdown we have with our county commissioners that we need to improve in both sides, so. I agree with Counselor Coleman in moving forward. From the council, I think we have a very good council. I, I stand behind this council. We have seven counselors that try our best. It's a thankless job, and we obviously are not in it for the money. So that's, the public needs to understand that too at a lot of times. We have to make some hard decisions, and sometimes it's not decisions that are favorable in the community. But all in all, we do try and, and we do care.
I apologize if I came off harsh. I just get very emotional about my community and what's going on downtown with the homeless is, is very frustrating, and I would just like to see us move forward and get something done so we can do other things that we really need to be invested on doing. And I get, I get aggressive, and I am sorry for that. I don't mean to hurt anybody's feelings. I actually really appreciate the debate and the discussion. And I don't always express that.
Thank you. City Attorney. Again, council business good of order or anything? If not, we will adjourn at eight ten.